Welcome. I'm Diane Meyerhoff, host for Town Meeting TV's presentation of the Winuski School Budget, part of our ongoing Town Meeting 2021 coverage. The show is being aired live on Town Meeting TV, that's Comcast Channel 1087, and streamed live on the YouTube channel. We welcome your comments and questions. If you're watching this program live, please join the conversation at 862-3966. I'm joined by the Winuski School Board President, Mike DeCaro, and Board Member Alex Yin. Thank you both so much for joining me tonight.
Thank you, Diane.
So tell us, what do voters need to know for this town meeting day?
Well, we got a presentation that if you don't mind, we're sharing with pictures.
Please do.
It's a little bit more detail.
All right.
Let's see, am I sharing the screen just?
Yes, you are. Perfect.
Oh, so we've got images of, you know, some of the invaluable work of our students and kind of the new construction that is going on at Winuski. So very exciting times.
That's impressive. That middle slide, my goodness. Wow.
It is. And one of the things that like we like to do to remind folks that we're a school board that is government policy governance. And what that means is really about focusing on an end statement that our community kind of developed at the very, like, 10 years ago or so. And I want to start off with this because this frames how we think about the budget process in Winuski with the school district. And I want to remind us that when we came up with this, it was a community effort, and it said that all students will graduate from the Winuski School District, college and career-ready, at a cost supported by a majority of the Winuski community. And our students will lead healthy, productive, and successful lives and engage with their local and global community. And you may ask, like, what does that mean? And for us, you know, like, we look and there's a, I'm smiling right now. Almost my smile is like going a bit bigger because I think about, this year, our school district produced three presidential scholars. Not one, not two, I mean, I'm feeling LeBron James, but three presidential scholars. That's one of the highest honors to be given, and that shows that all that effort and the work that we've done the last 10 years in changing the curriculum and producing those career-ready and college-ready students is coming to fruition. More importantly, our students and our community are working and helping us become an anti-racist school district. It is not something that, you know, like, we can do on our own. And I think that's one of the things that is important is that as I've watched the curriculum through the years is that the entire amount of students to hold us accountable to do this as a town and as a school. Are we always perfect? No. Have we made mistakes? Yes. But at least we're willing to work together to get to that point. And more importantly, we want to say thank you to the community so far for helping support the capital project. And you saw that kind of image at the very beginning about that project, and you're seeing the school. But I think that this is a project that really shows our students that we actually care about them, and we're going to be able to grow as a city together. And you're going to hear about some of the exciting things that we've done to try to keep the costs as low to our citizens, to our residents of Winuski. Just to give you some small numbers here, we are still, you know, these are the, there's many ways of counting students, and when you're counting the number of eyes and ears that Mike kind of provides us and the bye-bye tube, this is kind of the distribution of students. Right now, we have 800 students here. But once again, there's many ways of how you count students, and you'll see what I mean by that as we go further along in our presentation. But you're learning that, like, we are a healthy side schools, and I do believe that we will continue to grow, especially as people learn about not only the curriculum, but also the building that we're going to be having for our school. A little bit more about our population. We have 62% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. 40% of our students are English language learners. And 23% of our students need eligibility and are being supported due to a disability. So what that means in many ways is that, like, and what I care about is, like, our students are willing to overcome the barriers, and we as a community have things that we have to work on together. And it's not the easiest population, but we do it. And I think I just want to, like, kind of highlight some of the some of the challenges and things that we have as a school district as we think about our budget. Just so you know that, like, from our regular school budget, here are, like, just the numbers for most people to understand. Our school district is proposing a overall budget of a 2.69% increase. And when you look at where majority of this increase is coming from, 80% of this is coming from salaries and benefits of our faculty, for faculty, staff, and people who do well for the community that we live in. I mentioned that, like, even though we have 799 students, but how the state counts us, we've actually had 974 students because the way the waiting formula puts it, it recognizes that it costs extra to educate certain students. For the waiting formula, like, you know, high school students cost just a little bit more than cost than pre-K. And I want to emphasize that, right now, going in the state budget for us that's important is to recognize that there is a waiting formula that we are really working on and advocating to really change the school budget. So with the equalized pupil, even though our spending for each student does kind of increase 5%, but the hard part here is that the property tax is going to increase 6.7%. And that's really related to the state funding formula and how we're really, even though we're not spending as much being outrageous with the budget, we recognize that the state, we have to help cover up the state. And some of that's due to the pandemic and some of the revenue shortfalls that has happened in the pandemic. And that's the hard balance that we're having here is that we had a strategy that we knew that we were right on the right path in educating our students, and we didn't want to make cuts to that. So we try to keep as much level funding. And I also want to emphasize that in this budget that's in here is also us starting to strategically think how to start paying down that debt service that we have with the bond of the school that we're building. I'm going to hand it over to Mike so that he can kind of explain how this affects your taxes.
All right. Thank you, Alex. So as we try to focus every year, the the impact of the, you know, 2.7% increase in spending and the tax near 7% increase really depends on household income, the way the tax education funding formula works. For those folks that have a household income below $99,000, the increase last year was 2.3%, the proposed budget will increase 2.45%. And that's done at a flat rate. We'll mention it again as we go down through all of these, but we really try to stress the the community to fill out tax forms, and we'll get to the tax forms themselves later on, to get the refund for the, that gets you to this, the tax rate here, and we'll get to that in a little while. For the funding formula, I'll skip to the bottom bullet here. For household incomes over 138.5, the tax will be based on solely on house value. We'll get to some detail on that. And then for household incomes between the 99 and 138.5, it's based on a mixture of the two. Ultimately, how it will affect any individual is based on income and whether you fill out the proper tax forms, but we've got some examples here as we go forward. Alex, so for instance, here with regards to an income-based, again, this is income less than $99,000, and we just picked ran, not random, but we picked $10,000 increments here. And you can see the monthly difference. It's $100 over a year at pretty much the top end, which is $8 a month for the tax increase that we're proposing here. And then you can, so you can see the 2.34%, which was this year's increase, and then a next year, 2.45 proposed. Then on the next page, this one is property-based only. Remember, these are household incomes 138.5K and above, based on the household value. I think in Winuski generally, I think if you look at the 250 to 275 assessed values, current assessed value, you're somewhere down in the $300 difference for the year, $26 a month, all the way down to $300,000 house, 345 total, or just short of $30 a month. And so if you're in between the 99 and the 138.5, it will be somewhere in between these two. And but this is the high end here and the low end on the other chart. So this, the other item that we're going to find on the, on the ballot that, to me, is one of those that, understanding whatever, what all of the budgets are based on, there's another item that's going to ask if the voters of the city of Winuski will accept $3,026,199 from the federal government to support programs that are required. You can see the list down below, Title 1, 2, 3, IDEA, Medicaid. And so these are, this is a, we have to vote on accepting the federal money to support programs that are federally required. So there's no impact on taxes on this guy. And a yes vote is just to accept the money to support the programs that are required. So I really would like to see 100% yes on this with the lack of impact on any local taxes and its funding programs that we have to do.
So it's essentially a housekeeping item?
This is, yeah, the federal government requires that we put this on the ballot and accept the money that they're going to give to the town to support, again, the programs that are required. So, you know, you kind of hope for 100% yes on this would tell me that folks have understood what this item is right from the beginning.
Okay.
And then the, so in the package here, I think this is posted on a website, there is a video about how to understand Vermont's education property taxes. This thing has been simplified, and after eight years on the board, I ran into this thing and found it. It's still not simple. But if you have questions about how the tax rates, education tax rates are based on common level of appraisal, how well are your housing, how well is your town's housing stock selling against the appraised value? In Winuski, we've had houses selling very quickly and very well. The, though, you know, when, when time comes to reassess, that'll be a boon to the city, they'll readjust the tax rates. But this is, this is a negative impact on education taxes. The more we're selling, the more houses we sell above the assessed value, the higher our education tax rate will be, all other things being equal. So this, this video here is worth watching if you want to get a prep on some of the education funding methodologies. So Alex, the other available funds, and this one I'm going to spend just a little bit more time on because I think this one is important as well, especially as the community members see, especially the bottom number under fund balance. Capital Reserve is a fund that the school keeps. When we decide to put money into the Capital Reserve Fund, it has to be used for building and equipment-type expenditures. It can't be spent on programming or any of those other items. 320,000, I think our auditors have told us that up to 500,000 or 600,000 in here for general readiness for repairs is probably a good number, 320. We can, based on the fact that we're remodeling the building, is a good level at this point. And that's come about with excess. We don't, we don't feed this. It comes around as excess in any year's budget that we don't spend. We vote to, you know, put it into the Capital Reserve or keep it in the fund balance. Which brings me to the bottom one. We've got about 1.8 million, as of June 30th and end of FY '20, we had $1.8 million in our fund balance. And that has come about over the course of five or six years. We've had a few fund balances, and especially last year with COVID. We had a lot of programming items that we, we didn't do in the school. We just didn't spend the money. There are quite a number of things to do with that, and we've talked through a lot of them. The first one that seems obvious is put it right back into the budget and then cut the, cut the tax rate for the taxpayers. The problem with that piece is next year, you have to put 1.8 million back into the budget to not increase the taxes. If you have nothing to put back into the budget, you have to add your normal increase plus the 1.8, so you're going to take a double hit on the taxes if you do that. So one of the things we've talked about is waiting on this fund until the construction is done to ensure that we can take care of any items that we believe are truly necessary that may be outside of the scope of the building project. And at the end, we had an analysis run just to see what the impact would be. If we used $1 million of this fund balance and paid off some of the capital project expenses and borrowed only 56.8 million, then that $1 million investment into the capital saves us 3.8 million dollars over the life of the loan. So that seemed like a pretty, pretty the right way to spend some of that money, and that's one of the options on the table. And we don't have, we have another year and a half before we have to actually decide what to do, and we'll develop other options as we go, just to see what best fits our needs.
And just to add on, Diane, like, you know, I'm hoping that the city and our residents who are voting have faith in us and trying to make these kind of decisions because I, no, it's not in this presentation, it's all the things that we try to do to keep the debt service lower. Like, I want, we need to thank our administration for getting the USDA loan for us that has reduced the interest rate that we had, that's going to save us 10 million, potentially $10 million over the lifetime of the.
I think it was almost 17, Alex, at the last view.
You know, like, so the, you know, we've also invested wisely in having a communications person who has paid off just for the COVID-19 kind of work that we've done, but also have started the Hearts of Winuski Foundation, where people are putting faith and donating money to the building thing. And then, and these are the items that we're doing to try to keep that building cost low, but also still supporting the students that are in so that we can continue, like, maybe, you know, get the three presidential scholars a year, right, you know? I mean, just recently, we had a student that is a finalist for the Cook Foundation Scholarship, the only student in Vermont, you know? So we got to say that, like, you know, having this merger of not only educating, it's always important to think about it from the curriculum. No building is ever going to educate a student, but giving them that space so that all students can be educated well in an equitable fashion is important. And I think we're doing our best as a school board, working with the administration to find ways to keep the costs reasonable for our residents because I think, as Mike knows this for me on the very perspective here, we didn't want to build a school that wasn't for our current residents. We're hoping to find a way to keep our residents here so that they can also enjoy the fruits of this building and of our community members. And that is fairly important. That's why we work really hard on keeping this budget as reasonable as possible for our taxpayers. Anything else to add, Mike?
No, I think on this one, that's, that's good.
So the question is, is really, how can I help myself? And one of the things that we want to really emphasize is make sure you fill out those tax, those forms that you get. Some of you may already have your mortgage companies kind of fill it out for you. I know that my mortgage company does it, but pay attention to make sure that you file either the H1, HI 11144 or the HS 122, because those are the things that allow you to be eligible for those tax relief credits that we mentioned earlier in the slide in the counts and stuff. It is.
Sorry, I would also add to that, that it's really important to get them in on time because there is a deadline, and it's really solid. I've heard horror stories, so just to also mention that.
Thank you, Diane.
Yeah. So please do that. If there's one thing that you get out of this is, you know, out of this meeting is, please, no matter what you do, how you vote, please fill out these forms for you yourselves. And then there's the other caveats, like, there's always changes in the state where they, you know, might change on the tax rate and the expected yield rate on this. I mean, we even had that, like, when we actually started this presentation, I'm going to tell you, the tax rate was even higher, and we were lucky that the state legislates worked to make the yield rate down. Still, please note that we're never really comfortable at that rate, but, you know, we thought it was a little bit, at least a little bit, much more digestible for those. And as you saw, Diane, that we've only increased our budget about 2.47%, but the tax, predicted tax rate is going to increase about 6. So please call your representatives and governor to talk about, like, what is going on with that. And, and there are, there is a waiting study that, you know, where I said, like, you know, the equalized pupil kind of count, you know, is what actually impacts the students. And even though we have 799 students, our equalized pupils around 1,000 students. We also recognize that we have a harder population to educate, and there's another waiting study that actually, like, would actually say that we actually have 1,600 students in our district.
Wow.
And if you think about that, like, and if you're wondering about that, please call your representative Taylor Small and Hal Colston about S13 and H54, which are the waiting study thing, because this would really help our district really find ways to edu, find better ways to build a budget that can actually educate all of our students in a much more equitable way and stuff.
The only other piece, Alex, I'd like to add to that last one was the, when we sit down in the latter part of November, very early December, to put a budget together, the only thing we can really focus on at all is spending in the school. That is, that is the knob that we have to turn. We spend three or four meetings trying to understand what we need as a district, what are our big concerns. A couple of years back, we had an ELL middle school teacher to student of 50 or 60 to one. So the request was, we really need a position here, and those items are brought forward. This year, as Alex mentioned, we level funded. We're in the middle of negotiations with the teachers, so we're not sure where that's going to end up for FY '22, starting July 1st. We don't know where the yields are going to end up until the session closes in Montpelier. So we're going to vote on a budget in March, where we won't know exactly the final details. We'll all come together at the end of May or sometime in June. I've not seen too many cases where we voted a budget and the, and the tax rate actually goes up from where we project it. They normally either stay flat or go down for a little bit from where they are, where we project them to be. So that estimate is a big estimate, and that's what we work through. So on here, you can contact the school board members for any further information. There's a budget flyer on the school website and mailed out to all the homes as well soon. Annual report is available. We do the budget presentation a couple of more times as well. Normally, we'll do a community dinner and present it there due to the gathering restrictions. At this point, we'll do a virtual one February 17th. And then we are required to do one the night before the election. At this point, I think that one may be in-person. Right now, it's scheduled there. And we'll present the same information with a little more detail. And then the vote will be on Tuesday, March 2nd.
And people can also, oh, good, exactly. That's what we talked about in the last session. Go for it.
Yep. So early voting begins in a week. And to be able to take part in that, mail in the web, the website here to set that up. And then again, March 2nd, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, the polls are open.
And I think Jesse Baker, the city manager, said that there'll be postcards mailed to everyone, and you can send that postcard back requesting a ballot as well.
Okay, okay.
Plenty of opportunities to vote. Yeah, lots. So, and I'm sure, again, it's all on the website. So if folks want to get more information.
Good, yeah. And that is, I mean, we brought a lot of people out to vote in November because I think of the, both the convenience and the lack of will to go to an in-person place among a lot of people. So if there's any concern with that, the mail-in voting obviously is a good way to work around that. Stay safe.
One of my co-hosts calls it convenience voting, and I think that's just a great, a great way to say it. That, you know, when it comes to your door, or you mail it in, or you drop it off, it's, there's just so many way, whatever works best for you.
Yep. If it gets more people out to vote, that's exactly what we're looking for is to know that we have support one way or another and work through it.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So, so do a little sum up for me. What do people need to know when they go to the ballot? When they go to fill their ballots out?
I think in a nutshell, Alex, I would say we've worked very, very hard knowing that it is a hard time economically right now for a lot of people. We've worked really hard to keep the spending down. I think we started out at about 14% tax increase, and most of the change from there down to where we are now happened because the state changed the yield numbers. But we kept the spending down very much, very purposefully because we believe that people in this time do not, people are hurting. We need to keep things very, very tight. But we don't want to step backwards in the things that we're doing. So we don't want to cut staff, we don't want to cut programming, but this is a bare bones budget.
Yeah, you can't say it any better, but, you know, I think one of the things I think is, is that, like, we do have grit, and I think it, it shows in the way that, the way our school district has been run in the last eight years. I hope you continue supporting it because I think if you look at what we're doing, it's continuing that investment plan that really builds that sense of community for our children in our district. And I hope that we may not see the long-term effects because some of us might not be here, you know, as Mike says, he won't be here when the bond ends. But maybe the children of the peep, of the students that got to experience this new school district will be here and build that sense of what is a Bermonter, right? And, and I've written many times that, you know, like, I think in many ways what we're doing in Winuski with the new building and showing is a beacon of hope and redefining what it means to be a Bermonter, not by the number of generations, but our passion for equity, you know, and democracy, if you think about, because we're the district that, you know, everybody points to that says, like, we have the most diversity. But we're now also investing that, and we're letting that diversity show. Diversity is not the outcome, right? Diversity leads to creativity, to innovation, to passion, openness, justice, and all that. And I think when we vote on these budgets, I think, and you say, yes, it's a faith in that direction.
And Alex, even though you've been here not quite a lifetime, you are a Winuski resident just due to your passion.
Thank you, Mike.
I love, I love the enthusiasm and the passion. It's nice. You don't always hear that in, when we, when we do school budget presentations. So.
Believe.
Not always.
Have to believe in what you're bringing forward and wholeheartedly believe that we are on the right path.
Well, that's, I think that might be a great place to end our, our presentation then for tonight. I don't think we could say anything more than that, can we?
You know, Mike and I can talk forever, and she can, you know. But, I mean, I don't know if there are any phone calls or anybody else there.
No, I think people are just not out there right now. But the great thing about this is it's available on demand, you know, online at any time. And people really do, a lot of people, we noticed, watch it right before they fill their ballots out, like, normally, like, near a town meeting. People do definitely, definitely do, do watch it on demand. So, you know, it's, maybe they weren't with us tonight, or maybe they need some time to think about it. But you'll have more opportunities for presentation, so that's, that's a great place for folks to come and talk to. Yeah.
And please, please contact us. I know if anybody's going to call me, please leave a message because I don't always get to my phone, but I'll get back to you.
Good to know, good to know. Yeah, and you can always go back over the slides and see people's phone numbers and how to, how to get, get ahold of folks.
We're on a website. They're easy to find.
Right, great, great. Alex, you want to share something else? I can tell.
No, I was just going to say thank you, Diane, for hosting.
Very much.
Back and stuff, you know?
Well, it was a lot of fun. I appreciate it. Again, I love your enthusiasm. It was, it was, it was fun. So thank you both very, very much for joining me. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good night to the voters, and don't forget to vote early or vote on Town Meeting. But most importantly, just what? Vote.
Period. Exactly. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.